All right. Nice to see you all. Let me begin. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. General laws. Thirty. A paragraph eighteen and the governor's March 15, 2020 order imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Southborough School Committee will be conducted by remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and/or parties with a right and/or requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the district website at the webpage really that was printed in the posting. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to listen or watch the meeting may do so in the following manner: SAM Government Channel, Verizon Channel 37, Charter Channel 192. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so despite best efforts, we will post on the district website an audio or video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. That said, I'd like to call to order the Southborough School Committee open meeting on Wednesday, September 9, 2020. The time is 6:33 PM. All Southborough School Committee members are in attendance. First item on the agenda. Is audience sharing. I would just like to say a word about audience sharing. The Southborough policy is that we limit the, we have two times for audience sharing, before and after. We try to limit those to 20 minutes. And we try to limit each speaker to three minutes. In these times, especially when these meetings have gone longer. You know, we've been known to, I guess, go outside of those, but you know, I'm just looking for folks to at least be aware that that's what we'd like to try to do. If you have longer message or communication for us, we'd encourage you to send us an email. We'll try to either respond or, you know, perhaps post it for the next meeting. That said. Let us go to audience sharing. And let me see if I can pull up. Pull up the participants is what I'm trying to do here. Greg, can you see if anyone has got their hand up?
So no hands up at this point in time.
Okay, then we will hopefully catch folks when we get done. So we'll go right to new business. Which is the COVID-19 health situation. Greg, I'm gonna turn this over to you.
Sure. So with school, one week away, the central office team and principals have been working tirelessly to prepare for the first day of school and reopening. And before I turn it over to each director to provide a brief update, I just want to acknowledge the principals and their hard work, as well as the central office leadership team. It's been a summer, hopefully that we don't have to experience again from a central office standpoint, but also I know families, it's been a challenging summer for families as well. So I just want to acknowledge the principals' work and the central leadership team's work. We've done a lot of preparing and planning to welcome our students back. And I know educators are very excited to see their students and get to the work of educating. So at this point, I will turn it over to Rhonda Webb to give a brief update on English language education and some of the work that she's been doing with her department.
Good evening. So instead of our enrichment program for English language learners, this summer, we had an outreach to connect with our families and students virtually. And we shared some of the documents that, the health documents that we have, for example, things you can do to get ready for school, how to wear a mask, how to put it on, how to take it off. We also had a webinar, and Stephanie was on the webinar with us for families, and we had it interpreted into Spanish, Portuguese, and Arabic. So that has been very successful as we continue to work with our families and everybody getting ready and understanding the different models with which we are opening for school. So thank you. Appreciate the opportunity for sharing.
So next, Roger, I'm not sure if you'd like to have questions, or should we go through the reports and then save questions for after the reports?
Okay, all right. So just, I'm not sure that everyone from Southborough had joined, but I just want to repeat that. If for committee members that have questions, let's use the participant hand raise, then I can see who's kind of next in line. And I guess if I, if I miss you, then go ahead and blurt it out. I'm not sure. I think if there are any questions, why don't we ask questions as we move along? And then it'll, you know, the topic will be fresh in everyone's mind. Seeing none.
So next, we will have Heather Richards present and all the work that the Human Resources Department has been working toward over the summer.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. The Human Resources Department has been very busy with supporting employees through this challenging time. We've been having a lot of very detailed and sensitive conversations advising employees on different things like Family Medical Leave Act, Families First Coronavirus Act, and the Americans with Disabilities Act, talking about PPE and accommodations. And so it's been a lot of very, very detailed conversations with employees. In addition to that, we are actively in the recruiting stage. We are recruiting a lot of substitutes right now. So if anybody's interested in applying to be a substitute, we are currently accepting applications and actively interviewing for those positions. We've been working through some staffing changes, so there have been a few unexpected resignations. And we've also worked through the standalone remote process and staffing that program. So in addition to that, there have been some changes with flexible spending and some benefits changes as a result of the COVID-19 situation. So the HR department has been very, very busy supporting employees in a number of different ways. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
So next, next we have Mary Ellen Duggan, who's been extremely busy this summer, I think, between Keith and Mary Ellen. I think they have the most steps out of the entire central office team. So Mary Ellen Duggan will give a brief update on the health wellness and all the work that she's been doing.
Good evening, everybody. Thanks for having me here today. So we have been getting our staff ready for students to come in. We've had lots more health and safety trainings. Our first day of PD was full of health and safety trainings with the staff and the medical team. And then the second day, we did mental health wellness, wellness with Dr. Carrie Wilkins. And then we had Dr. Medina joined us again with some of our town supports, with Southborough Family and Youth Services, joined us to explain all of the services that they provide for the community. So it was the mental health and wellness of our staff, as well as what's available for our community and the needs for of our students. We have, the medical advisory team has made a cable program. We taped one for parents, informational evening we did. We've sent out educational flyers, the one Rhoda referenced that she had translated for parents. We are planning a parent Q and A forum before school starts next week. And the nurses just did a video for the kids today about wearing a mask and what you need to do for your mask break and washing your hands, all of that. So that will be coming up soon, shortly. We are promoting a community commitment with everybody, and that community commitment is to be safe, be smart, and do your part. And all of us doing our part is going to make it possible to us to stay in-person school for the rest of the year. So it's up to everybody to do what they need to do to keep us healthy and safe. We've been busy distributing PPE to the employees and just working with our gracious voluntary medical advisory team, who I can't thank enough, I'm indebted to immensely, which is Dr. Sierra Nalo, Dr. Medina, Dr. Carey, Dr. Castigan, and our Board of Health, Emily Amico, the Board of Health Nurse. So they have been invaluable resource for the whole district throughout all of this. That's it in a nutshell, I think.
Okay, thanks.
Right. So next, we have Stephanie Reinhorn, Assistant Superintendent.
I see, I see Kamali has her hand up. Did you have a question for Mary Ellen?
Yeah, Mary Ellen, you alluded to a parent Q and A forum before the start of school. What could use, when would that be?
We're hoping to do it on Tuesday the 15th. We're trying to get the confirmation from all of the medical advisory team to be available. So that would either be Monday or Tuesday evening.
Okay.
So that's before, hopefully before virtual school starts. If not, then maybe one Thursday of that week before we come back in-person school to go over everything that parents might need to know before we start. We're hoping to get it before the 16th, but it's all dependent on everybody's availability.
Okay. We did, I mean, I'm a parent, and we did see the video that you and the other medical participants completed, and I thought that was very helpful for people.
Thank you.
All right. There are no more questions. I'll turn it over to Stephanie to give an update on curriculum instruction and a little bit of information about the hybrid and standalone remote program.
Thank you, Greg. We have continued the planning process, getting more and more specific. As Heather mentioned, there's been a lot of work happening in terms of the standalone remote program with, you know, having specific students enrolled. We then have been doing all of the staffing, scheduling, and all of the detailed work that goes with that and communicating to parents about class assignments and schedules. The, I think the other probably big update is related to the professional development, which then relates to all of this sort of curricular planning and, you know, curriculum and instruction work that's been happening. It has been a significant effort on the part of many, many people to put together 11 days of PD. So a big thank you to the Professional Development Committee, to all of the directors and the NASA team and the principals, who are all playing parts, and then to many educators within the system who are providing professional learning opportunities for colleagues, along with engaging in collaboration and shared planning. So it's been quite an effort all around, and a lot of positive feedback and a lot of positive energy. It's as people have been engaging in the work.
Looks like Katura and Jen both have questions in that order.
Okay, thank you. I'm wondering if you could just go into a little more detail about the types of PD that have been happening during this time period. I know that's been a source of discussion about what's, what's happening during this whole time period, and I have no doubt that there's a lot happening, but I think it would be nice to hear maybe some of the details of what's, what's been going on.
Sure.
Before, before Stephanie begins, I just also will share that the combined school committee meeting next week will have a comprehensive presentation on the PD plans over the past couple of weeks as well. So.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll give the really quick over, you know, sort of give you a better sense of what's been happening. And then, as Greg said, more details next week and really show you the schedule and, and things next week. But we, as Mary Ellen said, started with health, wellness, safety, social emotional well-being, and operations. Really started with all of those things that people needed to get back in and get comfortable, which included Dr. Carrie Wilkins on the social emotional front. And then we have moved into more of a focus on curriculum instruction and planning, getting woven into that other work around social emotional learning. That has included technology, both with an outside speaker who was really well received at the end of last week, but also internally, we have a lot of expertise and knowledge. So there's been a lot of work done around everything from Zoom to Canvas to Google Classroom to other applications and digital tools. But then also just, you know, a lot of collaboration time and school-based and team-based planning, like people really working on developing their lesson and unit plans and how to roll out the year. So it's, so it's back and forth between workshops and planning time. And as Greg said, I will show schedules and things at the combined meeting next week to give a more detailed picture, and I'm happy to answer other questions.
Thank you very much.
No more hands at this point?
All right. So next is Keith Loveaway, and Keith has been done a tremendous job over the summer, making sure that our facilities are ready, working with our facility manager, making sure our operations, our food services and transportation are all lined up and working closely with principals. So Keith has done a tremendous job, and he'll give a brief update of some of the details.
Yes, thank you, Greg. The area that I would like to start with is food services. Over the summer, we've been working very closely with Kyle Parsons, our Food Services Manager, to make sure that we are ready, our kitchens are ready, and our staff is ready to receive, receive students for the start of school. We received word just recently, within the last week and a half or so, that the United States Department of Agriculture, the USDA, has extended its waiver to provide free lunch to all students. And for all meals served, the district will be reimbursed at the free rate, which is $3.55 per meal. As a result, we are offering families the opportunity to participate in our food services program, both in on remote days and in-person days. And for remote days, we are offering a pickup program, which will take place out of Trotty or Middle School. This is a lot to take in because it is going to be a little different. The form, coupled with a complete food services reopening plan, was part of the district back-to-school newsletter. But I will be sending out an additional communication with specific information on how to sign up for the program tomorrow through One Call Now. I do really want to encourage families to participate while the free meals are available. We are expecting that the free meal waiver will extend through December 31, 2020, or until the funds are exhausted. The other layer to this that I want to make families in the committee aware of is that we are asking all families to keep a positive balance in their My School Bucks accounts. This will help offset the costs associated with any à la carte items that are offered, or an extra milk that a student may want to purchase. And because these things would not be covered under the reimbursement that I mentioned earlier. And like, like Stephanie, there are a ton of details. It is embedded in the reopening plan that was issued as part of the back-to-school newsletter and is available on our, on our website. But I do want to encourage families to participate in the program that we're offering. And the hope is that we can really get our families exposed to it quick, so they become comfortable with the pickup program. And it certainly will be in place through the end of October. That is our, our current thinking. So before I go into things that are associated with transportation facilities, which is a little later in the agenda, we can focus on this for now. Katura, you have a question?
I just had a quick question, if that's okay with Roger.
Absolutely.
Okay, just, I just want to clarify. So this would be a free lunch available to all students, whether hybrid or standalone, on in-school days and all remote days?
That is correct.
Okay. Wow. Interesting. So similar to the spring, actually.
Yes, correct. And that was one of the clauses I deleted that I should have kept because it is very similar to the spring. The only difference as of now is that we are not going to be doing delivery until beginning of late October, early November, because it would happen on a Monday, and our Mondays are pretty inconsistent for the start of the school year.
Okay, thank you very much.
I would just add, Katura, that one major difference is we're getting reimbursed for the meals, where we weren't. So that's, that's significant.
Okay, thank you very much.
I see that Jess has a question. And if one of the staff sees somebody with a hand up about something they were talking about, it doesn't need to go through me. If you notice a hand up. You know, ask it.
Sorry about that, Roger.
No, 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 actually, no, you, you had enabled me to actually change, change the process, which was, which was good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So a quick question. This is for standalone remote students too?
Yes, that is correct. All students, whether they are remote or in-person.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Correct. But it does require them, Jess, one thing I do want to reiterate is it does require the families to complete the form, to complete the form once, which is good. So as soon as they become a participant, we will always have a meal ready for them for pickup on the schedule that's outlined in, in the plan.
Okay, great. And then I kind of missed the end of what somebody was just saying, but the, we're thinking we're going to be delivering again?
Yes, that is the plan. We would like to move to a delivery program later in October or in November, but that is not firmed up 100%. I'll be able to provide an update to that probably within a few weeks.
Great, thanks.
So also this evening, Julie Doyle is actually out, I believe, distributing devices for technology pickup. But I just have a couple of updates around technology. First, over the past week, in Northborough and Southborough, regional level, the technology team has been distributing devices for the one-to-one. They've been working closely with Stephanie in developing professional development opportunities for faculty, faculty and staff in terms of hybrid, as well as the standalone remote program. And a major undertaking that has been a tremendous effort has been the implementation of the Power School, which is our student information system. So houses all of our student demographic data and is used for attendance grading and so forth. So those are some of the major projects that have been happening over the course of the summer. And I just can't say enough about the technology team and all the work and effort. Just the student information system alone, the upgrade in that program is significant, but to do it in a pandemic is, is quite impressive. So I just want to compliment the technology team for its work. And I believe we are well-positioned and well-prepared for the start of the school year. And the last thing I'll add is that the technology team is also establishing a tech repair shop for our community members and our families, which will, we're not quite sure where it would be housed. We're thinking possibly at the high school, where families are having a difficult time with a device or need tech support. They can either call or bring the device by the high school. And we're also hoping to utilize some of our high school students to work in that experience and also give them some authentic experiences working in the tech field. Jen?
I just wanted to say a quick thank you to, also to, I believe it's a member of the tech team, Thomas Karen, who's been very responsive on all the Facebook groups and quick to answer people's questions. And I think it's been much appreciated. So I just wanted to highlight that and say thank you to him.
And Jessica?
I was also going to mention him too, because I know he's been a huge help for people. Question about Chromebooks versus iPads. I've been seeing some confusion. I think the original plan was for the younger grades to have iPads and the older grades to have Chromebooks. And then that hasn't quite worked out as planned. So our parents, you know, especially for kids who are a little bit older and are going to be needing a keyboard, is it up to the parents to be getting the keyboards that are needed if they end, end up with a fourth grader with an iPad? Or how's that going to work?
So I think that, you know, pre-K through eight, I know, for example, Mere School really used the iPads, and that's something that we tried to maintain at Mere School. And then depending on how many devices we had, and I believe, you know, Stephen Clayton, you can, you know, add some details, but I believe it's a combination of iPads and Chromebooks. And if a parent or family needs a keyboard for a device, we probably have it in our inventory already. So they should probably reach out to the tech team and ask at this point. Not sure if Stephen Clayton or Kathleen and Gary wanted to add anything.
Sure, Greg. I can just say that we, we distributed our devices yesterday and today. And parents were thrilled with the iPads. They were all iPads without keyboards. Our kids are used to those. There was a very comprehensive guide packet that went with it, describing how to log on, other information. So we're hopeful that, that we can continue to use them. They are updated and, you know, fully operational. Anyone, any iPad that isn't, we immediately get info on and we can swap it out.
At second and third grade, we're using Chromebooks, and those were issued yesterday and today. And to Clayton's point, there was a great deal of information that was provided to families so that they could troubleshoot remotely using those devices and using tech department members such as TJ and John and Galen and Julie. So we've been really thankful of the responsiveness there. We did notice quite a few requests back in the spring for Chromebooks, so that students could do word processing and typing a little more easily using the Chromebook. So, so I think that's a good fit for our second and third graders.
At Trotty, we're very accustomed to using the Chromebooks. We were able to distribute the majority of our Chromebooks yesterday. It was a huge task. Many thanks go out to the technology team. I know they worked through the weekend to prepare for this selfishly. It was great to see a lot of parents and students on campus yesterday. So it was pretty, pretty seamless. So a great effort by, by all who contributed.
Yeah, I agree as well. At Mere, yesterday and today, we passed out our devices as well. The majority of our students are also using iPads. There's one fifth-grade classroom, Greg Wallach, that does use Chromebooks. The topic of keyboards did come out, come up, and we did reach out to Julie Doyle today to ask about how we could explore purchasing keyboards for home use. And she is looking into some grant ideas for us. So I hope to be able to partner on that and provide those to, to families.
The other thing I would like to add is that the, coupled with the tech team, who Gary's right, did work tirelessly over the weekend to prepare for the deployment this week. The principals also worked very hard with their teachers to set up welcome packets for the family. So it wasn't just getting a device and, and a charger, but they were also getting some welcoming materials from the different buildings. So we did take advantage of the opportunity of, of having families on campus and giving them a more complete, complete packet. So I want to thank the principals for their efforts in this meeting.
I agree, Keith. And our SOS also partnered with us today by distributing yearbooks and all of the extra supply kits that we had. So it was a great opportunity to deploy as many things as we could to families coming onto our campuses.
Yeah, I imagine that the technological effort involved in this must be immense. And I doubt that it can be appreciated enough, quite frankly. I see Katura?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, Kathleen, I'm sorry, Kathleen.
Can I just add one more kudo, which were custodians who really went above and beyond to go and collect the devices that the tech team put together. And it was a lot of manpower and heavy lifting and coordinating. So I just think they deserve a kudos from all of
So noted. They certainly do. I'm sorry, Katura.
No, I, so I have, I have a question that doesn't have anything to do with tech. So once we're done with tech, I just wanted to make, I, and I don't know where to ask this, so I just want to make sure before we move too far afield from what's happening in the schools and start talking about funding and all of that. So is this a good time?
So Becky, Katura's, Becky is going to give a brief update on the finances. So actually, it's probably a perfect time.
Okay, so for my question?
Yeah, so let's have Becky present, and then we'll, is it a financial-related question?
No.
Okay. So why don't you ask your question?
Okay. All right. So basically, it's just, and I, if this is going to come up later, that's fine too. But one of the, one of the issues that I know was received was receiving some attention when we were planning out the models was what was going to happen on the hybrid learn from home days. And maybe I should have asked this when Heather was giving her update or or something. But I'm just wondering if we have any further information about you know, availability of staff to do things on those days. And this probably varies by school. But I thought that some information about that would be helpful.
Yeah, so I think that, you know, one of the areas that we shared was some of this would need to play out in terms of staffing and shifting and understanding how many students were signed up in the standalone remote program. So we do have a much better sense of of our staffing levels in terms of the hybrid model and the standalone remote model, and also who we can deploy in those non in-person days during the hybrid. So Stephanie can add some details around some of our thinking.
Well, mine are more general. And then I think the principals should feel free to jump in with some some examples. But I think it's what what Greg was saying, that people have been looking at, you know, the combination of educational support professionals and specialists and, you know, various folks on the staff. But I wonder if any of the principals have any specific examples of what you've been looking at in your schools.
In terms of planning it at our level, it's it's ongoing. It's kind of fluid. We're trying to figure out how we can utilize staff who aren't actually with kids physically to do some of the work that we need to do on those remote days. And it is Greg started the year with the word flexibility. We're embracing that full throttle at FIN. And we have people, as we mentioned, I think at the end of the spring, who are doing things beyond their comfort zone and challenging themselves in new ways, thinking about, you know, in ESP doing some sort of lesson. We had and one ESP who is into or very, very schooled in cultural, cultural equity, who gave an overview for kids on different expressions around the world, you know. So there is a lot of creativity that we're trying to firm up and structure in a way that fills in what you were referring to, Katura. It's but it's actually not, we're not quite there yet.
As far as work goes, we're looking at our scheduling primarily with our educational support professional staff, where if they are assigned to a student or a group of students in an academic setting, when those students are not in that setting, and if they go to a special area class, or if they're at lunch or recess, then, you know, thinking creatively and how we can put as many touch points as possible between those ESP staff members and our students at home. We know that there will be a great deal of of planning and preparation that goes into you know, the remote day on Monday, as well as any kind of preparation for in-person days so that students can be successful and independent on those remote days when they're not with us in school.
I agree with both Clayton and Steve. I think a lot of this comes down to our scheduling. And that's what we've been really working on this these past couple of days and really examining where those opportunities are for touch points with kids. We all recognize its importance and how to make the most meaningful, how to create the most meaningful opportunities where it's not just a touch point, but let's bring some some learning to this. And how do we make that happen in a way that's manageable across the school?
On Trotter's front, I do think that those asynchronous days, we are getting creative. We are, you know, staffing is is a priority. And, you know, I don't, you know, we don't have an abundance of free staff on those asynchronous days. However, teachers are creating assignments for those days, which would lend itself to the learning, the live learning, either a preview or review assignment. It's going to be self directed. There will be some touch points, but it will not, it cannot be supervised from, you know, eight o'clock from two o'clock. But, you know, we are setting schedules for students. We are going to have levels of accountability for students, and we're going to measure student progress throughout.
Jen?
I guess just just as a follow up question to that, do we know? I mean, at this point, or do we have a good sense of which teachers are coming in versus not? I mean, what is, what's it going to take for us to get to the point where we know? Is it an issue of just knowing whether or not we have enough substitutes or aides? Or I think what do we need to do to get to get to that point?
So so I'll just add, and people can fill in if I miss anything. But one of the things that is that is key is looking at the student support services that students require. Looking at, you know, our our hybrid models in person. If you look at our class sizes and the hybrid model for in person, they're quite small in terms of you know, there's no more than 12 students in a particular class. And that would be the maximum because of space. So we're going to have the ability, once we look at the student support services and what services students require, to be able to deploy those ESPs. So it's it's kind of, we do have a good sense of what what types of resources we have. Now that the student standalone remote program is kind of ironed out, and we have staffing assigned to that. It's just now a matter of letting teachers know, okay, here's, here are the resources you have. How can you support those students in the hybrid day? The non in-person hybrid day. I also will add that what's very different for the hybrid students from the spring to now is that consistency where they're going to, you know, have an in-person day, the next day, they're going to be given a packet or work that is at their independent level. There'll be a check in the next day. So there's there's continuity and coherence in terms of the experience for students, which I think will help. And when we add the touch points of ESPs and teachers, I think it will be a good experience for our students.
Thank you.
Well, Shad?
Yes, thank you for all of that.
And next, we have Becky Calagreenow, who will talk about the money that makes all of this happen. So Becky?
And can I share my screen, Greg?
And I just again want to thank Becky and the finance team for the great work that they've done over the summer. They've been involved in fiscal years, fiscal year 20, fiscal year 21, and starting to think about fiscal year 22. So they're they're living in three worlds right now.
While we're waiting, I'd I'd also like to add my thanks to all the principals and office, district office staff who have been working so hard, so hard on all of this. It's it's a it's a daunting effort for sure.
So good evening. I wanted to provide you with an update to the spreadsheet that was previously presented at our joint meeting with the Northborough School Committee. So you'll see this spreadsheet each at each school committee meeting with updates as we go along throughout the school year. One thing that I did want to point out to you is that in the grant section, since the last time that we met, we were recipients of a Remote Learning Technology Essentials Grant. It's a small amount of money. It's $1,724. However, it will be helpful in terms of purchasing additional hotspots and also some additional Chromebooks. And just a note on Chromebooks, we have purchased some Chromebooks through this grant and then also in anticipation of the school reopening grant. And right now, those are backlogged until probably November. And that is a nationwide shortage of Chromebooks that is occurring. So again, I want to point out on the expenses that these are our annual projections for those areas where we anticipate seeing a difference compared to what was budgeted. And I have made notes for those areas where we have already incurred costs. Obviously, this is as of August 31. So the majority of our costs over the summer ones were in preparation for the school year. And that was for PPE and then also for facilities and cleaning supplies. Also, between those two items, we had approximately $55,000. With the PPE and with the facility cleaning supplies, I have been working with Carla McAuliffe, the new town accountant, and also Brian Valentine to navigate the FEMA reimbursement process and then also look to the CARES Act money that the town had received, as those are eligible expenses. The other areas on this sheet, we are anticipating being able to use the school reopening grant funds. However, that grant does need to be expended by the end of this calendar year. So by December 30 of 2020, that $275,000 does need to be expended on those eligible expenses. So you can see that if we are to continue in a hybrid mode, that we are anticipating a difference in expenses of approximately $406,000 between the grants that we've received and also those expenses.
Oh, yeah, no, go ahead. Go ahead.
So I have a question about the last column.
Okay.
I understand when you say that this this, well, okay, let's talk about the the column we were just talking about, the Southborough K through eight column.
Yes.
So those are additional dollars from what we had in the budget without COVID. Is that, am I accurate in that? Or did I miss, am I missing out on the something?
So that may include what was already budgeted. So for example, in our teacher substitute line item, I believe we had $70,000 budgeted for teacher substitutes. So you can see on that line item that we're anticipating. And this, you know, now that we're seeing some of the staffing play out, you know, we're actually going to be looking at that substitute line item to see how accurate number that is and whether we can maybe bring that number down. But what I can do for the committee is I can compare it to what we have budgeted moving forward so that you can see where those differences are from the actual FY21 budget.
Well, what I'm trying to understand is the last column, and that's why I mentioned the first column where it says difference.
Sure. So that would be the difference between when we actually, so I have the year to date column in the middle. So that would be our actual spent expenses so far, year to date, fiscal year to date. So we haven't incurred any costs yet for our substitutes or for any of our additional staff.
All right. So and and the $280,000 number at the bottom reflects what?
Yeah, I'm looking at that, and it looks like I may have a formula error there. So it would be actually the difference between the 716 and the 57. So it looks like I might.
I was very optimistic when I saw that 280,000, hoping it was some new math somewhere.
I guess it's a Google Sheet math. Yeah. They say the rounding is different from Excel, so maybe that's it.
It would, it would be helpful. Certainly, what you offered to do, suggested, I think, would be helpful, really kind of understand. All right, where are we as far as a variance from some of these categories that, you know, as they would have existed before COVID? So that would be helpful.
Sure. Yeah, I'll add that column in.
Thank you very much.
So the next piece that I wanted to talk about is our preschool program. So we have made some modifications to the preschool program. You can see previously, we had two four half day options, an AM and a PM option. We had four full day offerings, and then we had a five full day offering. And I've included the the tuitions for the old offerings. With the new hybrid model, our preschool is our starting school. I believe actually it's next Wednesday that they are beginning their preschool experience. But we have made modifications due to the Monday remote day. And so we now have the same four, two, four half day options. And instead of having the four and the five day full days, we now have a 4.5 full day option for families. And we've taken a look at our preschool tuitions and given the fact that we are, will have a 170 day school year versus a 180 day school year. We have made some modifications to our tuitions moving forward. So what that means right now to the operational budget is that we have estimated expenses at $285,000. We have been seeing over the past few weeks, a decline in enrollments, families unenrolling their students. And Jennifer Henry, who's the director of the Early Childhood Center, has done a great job at trying to work with families who were on a waiting list to enroll new students and is trying to think creatively about actually bringing in new students to the program. So we are hopeful that the estimated tuition number will be brought up to a higher number based on her efforts. But at this point in time, based on our projections, we are estimating a loss of approximately $55,000. Now, the preschool revolving account did have a starting balance at the beginning of FY21 of $118,882. So that loss right now is able to be absorbed by that revolving account, and it would not have an impact on the Southborough K through A operational budget. But the preschool is something that we will continue to watch because it is a, it's a very fluid situation. And we are always receiving new students and having students unenrolled throughout the year.
I'll just add, Becky, that, you know, Jennifer Henry is also doing more advertising and recruiting for this program. And I believe the last time we sat down and spoke with Jennifer, she had potentially three new potential students. And also, she was looking at potentially starting a remote preschool where we could charge a smaller tuition, but make up some of the difference of of the the loss that we're seeing at this point. So again, Jennifer Henry has done a great job at looking at how we can mitigate and offset the the loss that we're we're seeing on the the bottom line at this point in time.
I see Katura and Jess in that order.
Okay, thank you. So are these numbers just Southborough? Or does this include Northborough preschool students? Or how does that?
This is both. Sorry, this is both Northborough and Southborough students.
Okay. And then I seem to recall that if we were to go fully remote, if we needed to do that, then we probably wouldn't charge tuition. Is that, is that right? And then this would be very different?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Jess, go ahead. And I have a question after you.
Okay, thanks. Becky, can you just briefly describe for the audience and some, maybe some of us newer people, what exactly revolving account is?
Sure. So the revolving account is something that the state allows school districts to set up when you have a a program such as preschool where the money is for a specific use. And so it allows us to pay salaries out of this account. And it also allows us to take in money, so take in the tuitions from the families and then expend it. So it is outside of the operational budget. It, you know, so that's why a portion of the preschool is not funded by either Northborough or the Southborough operational budgets. It's actually sustaining itself.
Yeah, I could add, Jess, that revolving accounts aren't limited to the school committees. Town has revolving accounts. I think the I think the significant item is where you're taking money in and can hold it, and then you can expend it, taking money in for that purpose, and then you can expend it. So it's can be done, you know, I guess outside of the normal operating budget. All right. So now I'll ask my question, which follows on to Katura's question about. So so these numbers are a Northborough, Southborough combined summary?
Correct.
So when you talk about the deficit that we have in the revolving account, then that's really the combined revolving account. That's just not a Southborough deficit, if you will, revolving account. That's for that's for both together, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
That's correct. Yes. And the 55, like I said, will be able to be absorbed by the balance that we have right now in the revolving account. It would be if, you know, in Katura's situation, if we were to not collect tuitions and we had to look at those expenses, the 285, which are all salaries, then at that point, that's when it would be absorbed onto the op. Look at those expenses, the 285, which are all salaries, then at that point, that's when it would be absorbed onto the operational budgets.
Thank you.
And we will have, the next report will have Becky disaggregate this data. So we can look just specifically at Southborough's expenses and, and, and loss.
Are we still on? Greg's list or? I'm sorry?
That, um, that Becky concludes our COVID-19 update and would happy to answer any, any questions. From the committee at this point in time.
Okay. So are we going to go on to? Legislative update? Am I looking at the agenda correctly?
Yes. So the next item on the, the agenda is the COVID-19, Southborough School Committee Resolution, COVID-19 State Funding. And basically this was a resolution that was brought forth to the Southborough School Committee early in August. And basically the resolution talks about making sure that. Districts have the financial resources to open up safely and responsibly. And that this basically asks the state to make sure that they provide adequate funding to support reopening of our schools. So this is a document that we reviewed in early in August. And if it's the will of the committee, I will make sure that this goes out via DocuSign to each committee member tomorrow. So we can get this off to our legislators to advocate for additional dollars as a result of the pandemic.
Would you like a vote on this, Greg?
Yeah, I think it would be good to have a symbolic vote.
Do we have any questions on this? Anyone? All right. So I guess I would entertain a motion. That the committee sent this. Committee resolution for COVID-19 state funding has really printed. As really printed in the agenda.
I, I would make that motion that we approve the Southborough School Committee Resolution, COVID-19 State Funding. Document as printed in the agenda.
Does that receive a second?
This is Kamali. I second that motion.
Okay. So we have a motion to approve state funding document as printed in the agenda by Katura. It's been seconded by Kamali. Do we have any questions? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Jessica?
Yes.
Kamali?
Yes.
Katura?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
I vote yes. So it passes unanimously. And I was incorrect. This really wasn't legislative update. So next is the school bus transportation update.
Sure. So before I turn it over to Keith LaVoy, I just wanted to provide the committee with a, a summary of the work that's been accomplished since the last transportation season, which was one that. I've not forgotten. It was extremely challenging. And as the committee may remember, over the course of. The spring prior to last year and over the summer, we did a significant reorganization of the central office. And we added capacity in several areas. In one area specifically was transportation. And that was segmenting at the time Becky Palgrino's responsibilities, which were finance, transportation and food services and facilities. And hiring and direct operations, which was Keith LaVoy. And Keith has, has created a tremendous amount of capacity at the central office level. To work on those items, specifically transportation. And then secondly, we added a transportation administrator, Jean Pinto, to make sure that we have the people power to support the routing. To make sure it's done well and provide the customer service that is expected of our, our community. So. I just want to give a quick update and I turned it over to Keith to give the community and the committee an update on where we are with the 2021 transportation.
Thank you, Greg. I do appreciate that. And I do want to give also a wholehearted thank you to Jean Pinto, our transportation coordinator. Who really began the work to prepare for the reopening in school back in the spring, where she was really dissecting the roots. Looking at the problem areas and making some small adjustments in preparation for whatever the fall would bring. And if this were a normal restart to the year, we would be very busy now fine tuning, making adjustments, adding and subtracting students from bus list. And actually driving the routes to make sure that we didn't miss something along the way. But because of COVID, we have had to make an adjustment to that original plan. I can say that Jean has reviewed all the routes very closely. We have prepared for the hybrid model as best as we can. And we've also prepared for a full in-person model when that time comes. So the good thing about what the community is going to see with the routes that will be posted on Friday, September 11th. Is that we have really accounted for all students that would require transportation throughout the three districts with the routes that we've designed. What we've been able to do is then take that as a skeleton and adjust it for the capacity requirements of COVID. As well as the cohort changes that happen over the course of the week. I can't stress enough how, what a large task this has become. And principals will also attest that we are making adjustments to the cohorts almost every hour as it goes. And I think it's winding down a bit. So Jean and I are really focusing in on these lists and on the routes and making sure that they are going to perform accordingly. I do also want to stress that with any adjusted transportation system, you know, we are, we are going to have some glitches and we do want to keep lines of communication open. So we do encourage parents to reach out to myself or Jean with any, you know, comments or concerns they have. But like anything, I would also like to them to give it a try because the start of the year is going to be uncertain in so many ways. It's not untrue for, for, for transportation. One of the things that we are going to be adding shortly, we are going to be doing a little bit of trial with it. We are going to be adding an application called Here Comes The Bus. Jean and I are working closely with our transportation provider, North Reading Transportation, NRT. To bring this online. And in fact, we are receiving more training on it this Friday to get acclimated. And what this app will do, and it's actually a very simple app to, to operate. Is it allows you to monitor where the bus is. So it can estimate times of arrival and then in the morning. And then estimate times when the bus will arrive in the afternoon. So what it's really doing is an overlay of a trans, a GPS system that will allow parents to have accounts and to track the, the buses accordingly. So we are excited to get underway. We are a little nervous, I'll be honest, you know, with the, the changes to our reopening plan and. And the list not being as fine tuned as we'd like them to this point. We, we are going to be working really hard in the next couple of weeks to prepare for the reopening. We also know that it's not going to be a hundred percent perfect. The good thing is that Jean and I are going to be available to the community, to the principals, to the bus company itself, to make the necessary adjustments. And we are off to a good start. We met with our bus drivers on Monday. We introduced the, the principals. We went over a lot of the safety requirements that are required. And we, I think everyone is eager just to get started and see how this goes. But that's kind of a, an overview of where we are and what people can expect in the days and weeks to come.
I'll just add Keith, that there's a tremendous. Number of new complexities that have been added as a result of the pandemic. One being, as we talked about in the past, other committee meetings, then one student per bus seat. And also the, the complexity of the A and B cohorts. As well as students who are attending more frequently. So again, there's been a lot of layers of complexity. That have been added to this transportation season. And, you know, Keith and Jean Pinto have done a great job and we're, we're confident that we will have. A high quality level of service for our community and our students.
I also want to thank NRT again. They have also been responsive in keeping abreast of all the things that need to be done. They're going to be numbering the bus seats. I forgot to mention that detail. To help us make sure we're, we're complying with the guidelines as, as best we can. So these are all going to be things that will be part of the reopening.
Okay. Keith, are you back to back? You're doing facilities update next?
Sure. Before Keith takes it over, I just want to comment on the incredible work the custodial team has done and the leadership of Keith LaVoy. Brian Fantoni, the facilities manager and all the custodial staff have been. Great. Worked really hard to prepare our facilities over the summer and been very, very cooperative. And very flexible and agile in terms of what they asked. So I just wanted to acknowledge, personally acknowledge their work and their leadership, getting our facilities ready.
And I, I would start by saying that I, I couldn't agree with Greg more. And the preparation for the start of the reopening really began early last spring. And especially when we discovered that school was not going to be reopening until the fall. We started cleaning right away and getting prepared, which has allowed our custodial staff to be available to the principals in a variety of different ways. From classroom allocation to furniture removal and storage to other creative ideas. I, I think the dining room at Neri is a great example of that. Principal Valenti was on the front edge of, of, of making adjustments and making sure that we were providing a welcoming environment. She was supported by Mike Dagel, her head custodian. They created a, I don't want to spoil the surprise. So I'll let you do it Kathleen, if you want the big reveal. But they've really done it in a safe way and in a welcoming way. And that goes for all the buildings. I know that, you know, Gary and Stacy were looking closely at the roots of Trattier and, and what was going to be the best way to navigate the building, what was going to be required as a one-way hallway. And also really looking at the individual classrooms to make sure that we were maximizing the square footage as much as possible. And I think that's been one phrase I've repeated. To the custodial team and Brian and I have said multiple times, what are the things we can do to maximize the square footage? So we can get the most distance between our students that we can. And I do feel that as the teachers have been coming back into the buildings. They've been able to see it firsthand, which has kind of relieved a lot of pressure and a lot of anxiety that they were having. And we're hoping it has the same impact on students. When, when, when they return. The other thing that you're going to see when, when you entering the buildings is that, you know, we do have signage. We do have additional signage in different places. We have made sure that our HVA systems are, are working at a hundred percent. So all of the. Air dampers are open. We are getting in a maximum amount of fresh air. And this first couple of weeks was really going over. All the things related to the building that needs to happen from an operation standpoint. So I really can't say enough about the principals. They've been having Q and A with their staff. From the small questions to the big picture ones, they've been able to handle a lot of that. And, and I feel that, you know, we are ready to receive students in the next couple of weeks as the reopening, as the reopening begins. So, you know, there may be some individual building questions that might be asked. And I didn't want to ruin the surprise for Kathleen. But certainly that's the level of detail that has gone into the preparation.
Well, the big reveal will be for us when we show our video of what the school looks like right now and how we're going to welcome students back into Neri. I'm not going to give it away, but it's.
Glad I, I'm glad I left it where I did Kathleen.
Thank you. It's a cliffhanger.
I just echo Keith's remarks around the work that principals have done preparing the facilities. I think that they know much, they always knew their building well. But they know their buildings really well as a result of this pandemic. The square footage of classrooms, how many desks sit in. You know, how the HVAC system works. So I think that. We've learned a lot in this process and had to learn a lot and the principals have done an excellent job. And again, Keith has done a tremendous job preparing our facilities and making sure that. All the safety measures are, were in place for our faculty, staff and students to return to school.
Yeah, this has to be just another monumental task that, that's probably hard to imagine. How much work this really is.
I just, I just forgot to, to add educators. Educators also. Were very flexible and adaptable. They spend a lot of time over the course of the summer preparing their classrooms, making sure everything is in its place. Their classrooms look, you know, look ready for students. And the summer, the summer has been a real challenge. Some educators have not been able to get into their classrooms as they typically do. And they've had to turn around their classroom setups rather quickly. As well as adapt to some new regulations and new procedures in terms of furniture management or lack thereof furniture. So. They've been very, very helpful and they've been a partner in this journey. And I just wanted. Thank them for all their efforts in getting the classrooms ready as well.
A really important point. Katura?
I, I, I just wanted to echo those thoughts. I, you know, we've had a lot of meetings over the summer and most of them have been with the combined committees. It hasn't just been Southborough. So we haven't really been able to see. The, the building leadership and hear in detail about Southborough so much. But. I just want to express my appreciation as well. And I know a lot of people, obviously in the community, appreciate it also, all of the work that it takes to do all of this. I mean, it is just. An unbelievable effort. Transportation alone, you know, facilities alone, educational aspects alone, and then you put them all together. So. Thank you to everybody for all of your work over the last, you know, weeks and months getting, getting ready for this. We, we appreciate it.
And I do want to thank the committee for their support. I know facilities has been a, a key point of our, the closure as well as the reopening. And by being able to sustain our, our, our custodial staff through the pandemic has, has paid dividends as we're preparing. I know some districts haven't done that. And because of that, we were able to get the buildings clean prior, you know, to when we previously would typically at the middle of August is when we're trying to really tie up loose ends and. And get things ready for the start. We were ready well before that to start receiving teachers back in the building. And that was just a huge advantage as to. You know, when faculty first started coming back last week and now this week, to really be able to be responsive to their needs, you know, versus, you know, finishing up the cleaning process. So that was a, a huge benefit. As this whole process unfolded.
All right. Thank you.
Welcome.
Legislative update?
So I have two just informal legislative updates and that the first is around the fiscal year 21 budget at the state level. It's important to note that we still do not have a state budget. We are operating under a three-month budget, which is set to expire in November. So again, this is important because it dictates our chapter 70 funding and state aid. Also a concern that I have is really around that FY22 budget and the time, timing and timeframe of the FY22 budget so we can make decisions. So I will be looking for, for opportunities for the committee to advocate for. Moving forward with FY21 approved budget at the state level. As well as making sure that the state adheres to the budget timelines so that we can do our work back in the community of Southborough. And the second update for the legislative update is really around the Student Opportunity Act. Prior to the pandemic, we spent a lot of time talking about. The Student Opportunity Act and really the, the rethinking about the funding formula at the state level. And over $1.3 billion over a four-year period was supposed to be spent on education. Southborough was supposed to receive some of that, the funding in the first year as a result of, of that legislation. And again, I think that it's something that the committee then will need to advocate to make sure that that funding. May, is maintained in the budgets moving forward because it would be easily lost. At this point with, you know, revenue projections at the state level. So those are the two updates for this evening.
Questions on that? So I would just like to add one item, which I think. Probably can, can go here. On last Wednesday. Congresswoman Catherine Clark, who's our representative from the fifth congressional district. Posted a, a meeting webinar. And the purpose of the meeting was to discuss challenges of navigating school reopening during the COVID-19 pandemic. And actually she does have background as a school committee member, Melrose. Kamali and I attended the webinar and I think there were about 30 or so, 30 some. School committee members and some of her staff. And I actually had provided, well, Kamali and I have both provided somewhat of a summary to them, to the school committee members, just about factually what happened. But Kamali. Agreed to provide just a short summary for the public. So I'll turn it over to Kamali.
Sure. And I think that you're right. It does piggyback well on what Greg just shared. So to give everyone an impression of what the meeting was like. there were basically committee members from throughout Massachusetts and I think that it's called District Five. And one of the things that I thought was is positive to kind of hear the concerns and the questions and the struggles that school committees were experiencing were not only unique to Northborough, Southborough. Many of the things that we're all facing, we were able to share those same concerns and questions. Something that came up both from Roger and myself, as well as the other participants, was that question about funding and the concerns around this end of year deadline. The Congresswoman was able to, she also, you know, shares that same concern. And it's something that she's going to be, you know, bringing to the table and she's working with the the leadership to, you know, see if we can have those, those meetings that they can make the decision and have that. But as of now, she didn't have any answers to give to us. But it wasn't, that wasn't the intention of the meeting, it was really just to hear us. And so when you talk about us as committee members advocating for these different initiatives, this, this was a forum where we could do that, that sort of thing. If you hear 30 or so representatives from committees all aligning around concerns on funding. Another concern that was repeated was around testing and how we support the various schools, teachers and the students. Everyone is taking a different approach and we are looking for some sort of, you know, method that is repeatable, where we could use lessons learned. And so those are some of those, those two things kind of kept coming up over and over again. Another thing that I thought, you know, the participants, as well as the community would want to know is there was still a very everyone was still very much in touch with, not only are we trying to get the schools open in a kind of post COVID manner, but we're also still also interested in how do we enhance the environment so that all of our students feel like they're being seen and heard, that the teaching is equitable. There are the District Five, most of the teams, most of the committee members that were there very much recognize that we are in, are in districts that have more than many others. And so some of the challenges that we're facing, as, as hard as they are, there, there, there are areas around the country and around Massachusetts that are far worse off. And so I, I was happy to hear that there was a recognition of that and that we want to, whatever we learn in our districts, you know, how do we make sure that the rest of Massachusetts and, and its students are feeling, are having those same positive enhancements? Both around things like lunch, things like, you know, the Chromebooks and iPad discussions that we're having. It seems so kind of, you know, nonchalant that we're saying to be do pickups on Tuesday or Wednesday. While not every district even has that. So for me, I'm glad that those things were not glossed over and that it seemed to me that the committee members that wanted to speak to the Congresswoman, they are in it for the students. They were there making sure that, you know, the, that the schools are going to be able to provide a safe and equitable environment for the students. And that really was reassuring that we weren't talking about things that really didn't matter. Especially when we had someone at the, in a position that could affect legislative action. So I think that one of the things we asked for is more forums like this. That we can have more opportunities to touch base with this Congresswoman as well as others. As committee members to be able to share what it is that we're experiencing and what we're hearing from our, both from, you know, the faculty, staff, teachers and students, as well as a broader community. Where it was, we're an excellent representation for them to be able to hear what is the, what is it that the people want to have happen? And the more that these legislators can get that, then they could actually, you know, put into policy things that we want. So that's, you know, all I have to say about that is it was a really good opportunity. It was short, it was well managed. And I really think that something positive will come out of that.
I really can't add anything. It was, it was a very good summary. Any questions? You all had kind of a written the summary before this. All right. Moving to subcommittee and liaison assignments. Whoops. What happened to my screen? Anyway, I'm not sure how to approach this. So I have a, I have a, I guess a question. There's about 35 line items on this. Could you put that up Greg?
Sure.
Now, I see that this is something that requires a vote. Is that in fact a, a requirement or just a kind of a confirmation?
Just a confirmation. It's not a requirement.
Okay. So as I understand it, because we don't have to vote the liaison assignments. And this process is, at least historically, it's, we don't have five people all trying to get on the same subcommittee as a liaison. There's a bit of arm twisting, sometimes generosity and somebody being willing to serve. And I think this potentially is going to change. Especially because we have Paul Desmond still on this list and he's, he's not on the committee anymore. So there's a number of other reasons. So rather than try to go down and deal with all 35 of these line items, I'd like to, is this something that you can actually change while we're looking at it Greg? Or is this just a PDF?
So this is a PDF this point in time.
All right. So I'm just going to, I'll, I'll run down this. And maybe if we just have a vote that says kind of as discussed, I think there will be some changes made on this before the next meeting. And then we can look at it again. I want to make sure that we, that we run down the critical items.
Could I make a suggestion?
Please.
So I think the first, the audit subcommittee, capital planning, operational budget, payroll and warrants and policy development subcommittee. We should most likely leave this meeting with assignments for those. And the remaining committees, we, we can probably spend some time really thinking about who wants to serve on the line outside of this meeting.
Perfect. Very good, a very good idea. I'll mention one or two of the other subcommittees and then we'll leave it at that. So capital planning. We had Mr. Challen, Ms. Primick and Mr. Desmond. I'm thinking, I've had some discussions with Ms. Martin. Is that something you're willing to sit on Katura?
Yes. Yep.
So I want, so I want to talk about that for a minute. One of the topics that's, that's will be coming up in, in town with the schools is the potential reconfiguration of number of schools in the next four, five, six years. That's obviously a major capital item. At least there, the discussions and these have been around for a while would potentially, if student enrollments allow, one of the things being looked at is giving, well, I'd say turning Woodward back to the town or town offices, et cetera. There's potential work that's going to be, have to be done on Neri. So there'd be some reconfiguration of which classes are in Finn and Neri, et cetera. So it's a, it's a, it's a large project. And there's a couple of ways of, of working with the capital planning committee on this. One is, and I think I'd like to, to discuss what the will of the committee is between the two options I'm going to mention. One is to be invited to the capital planning meetings on those meetings that this topic's going to be discussed. Another one is to actually ask if we have a subcommittee and the subcommittee's specific charter is to deal with this. Those were options that were presented to me by the, by Jason, I'll ask you, the chair of the capital planning committee. I was inclined, well, I had, I had some inclinations, but I know Katura's had much more experience, at least on this particular subject over the last year or so. And I'd like to, I guess, invite Katura to, I guess, communicate her recommendation on this to see if it makes, makes sense to us or not.
Yeah. So I, I, I've had a couple of conversations about this topic and my initial reaction to whether we would want to be invited to the capital planning committee meetings or have a subcommittee was that I thought it might be more efficient to have a subcommittee. One of the things that I did when this came up in conversations when I was the chair last year was I, there was a study done five, seven years ago, and I'm, I'm just going to go into a minute of history. For those who weren't around at the time, which I wasn't, so I had to get caught up. But so there was a study done of the, the schools in town as compared to enrollment and then projections of enrollment. And whether we might be able to use fewer buildings, given declining enrollment of students in Southborough. And, and the study was quite detailed, quite long. And there, there are a lot of kind of moving parts and factors to consider. And so, you know, when thinking about sort of revisiting this topic and, and sort of taking a fresh look at it, it just seemed to me that a subcommittee might just be more efficient. Generally in my experience, some committees are sort of a smaller working group where you can sit and really take your time if you need to without holding up an entire committee or more on, you know, getting into the details of the minutia and then come back with a summary and, and recommendations. And so my inclination was subcommittee, but you know, if, if others have other strong feelings about it, I'm open to that as well.
Well, I, I would just like to add, and then we'll see what other comments there might be. Now, in initially thinking about this, I was inclined to think that just being invited to the meetings would be sufficient, but in thinking more about this, I'm really inclined to agree with Katura in that I think a subcommittee would be more efficient. And this is going to be, you know, not a small item, you know, in the next, you know, in the future. Kamali, I see your hand up.
Yeah. So my, my take on it is that having a subcommittee would probably be the, would be the most effective, but you have to, that subcommittee, they need to show up and be at those capital planning meetings that they have because those persons are making, also take, making decisions. And if you don't have, if they're just going to kind of maybe take our written input, because we've met at us as a subcommittee and just handover input, there's something about being present in the mix. Where you're able to offer your opinion, maybe steer, steer the conversation differently. So I think it's actually a combination of your, your, both of your suggestions, Katura. You have the subcommittee within the school committee and then those attendees need to show up at the capital planning, you know, there, the, the town has a capital planning board.
If I, Kamali, if I could clarify something and I see there are a couple of other hands up and probably something I said led, led us astray. The subcommittee would actually contain members of capital planning as well as, as well as a member of schools. And potentially it could also contain others, but just the, the specific focus of that combined group, if you will, would be this project. So you're, you're absolutely right that you need to have participation exist between the, the various cohorts, if you will.
And then who, who is the decision made? Who holds the, who holds the right to kind of make the ultimate decision? Is it under the, you know, there's a capital planning group that the town has? And the decisions get made by that team with input from the subcommittee?
Well, there is, yeah, there is a capital planning committee for, and and, and the subcommittee includes members of, of schools. This ultimately, I think, you know, will, will end up at town meeting, you know, because this is going to be a major budget item. So I think that I'm, we're hopeful that people are all going to be aligned. I think that that's, I think it's reasonable to hope that. Certainly student enrollments, projections will, you know, will play a major role in this. It, it turned out that some projections that we had several years ago turned out to be understated. So we want to make sure that in moving forward on a decision like this, that we, that we don't misestimate, if you will.
Okay. So yes, I'm, I'm, I will vote or agree that we should have a subcommittee on this.
I see Jen and Jess in that order with hands up.
I, I think you've partially answered my question already, but when you say subcommittee, because there's only five of us on the school committee, right? But a subcommittee then would be expanded beyond school committee and would include, who's included in a subcommittee?
We would probably have a representative on that subcommittee. You know, I, you know, I, I certainly, these meetings are open, so anyone is invited to attend and would be invited to attend, but you know, we would have you know, one person represent us, you know, as, as a, as a designated subcommittee member.
With members from town or select, that kind of thing? Is that what we're talking about?
I think I'm going to defer, I, I would end up deferring to the capital budget chair, because they would be the ones that would really be responsible for, you know, kind of creating the subcommittee. You know, with us having a representative on it. And I believe, and actually Jason and Greg and I are having a meeting tomorrow morning. Jess?
I just wanted to say that I agree with the, the subcommittee idea. And the meeting you're having tomorrow, is that something that we'll get an update on?
Of course. Now, and I, this doesn't, this really doesn't require a vote, I don't believe. Jason was very gracious. He had identified that he'd like us to consider either one and then, and then let his committee know. So I think, I think it sounds like, you know, we're unanimous in what we would prefer and we'll pass that on. Greg, do you have anything to, to add or at least?
I think, no, I think that, no, I think it's a real partnership with the community boards, you know, the board is plugged in. The capital planning and it's a real community effort. So there will be a lot of opportunity as this moves forward. And I think having, having a subcommittee of the sub-subcommittee makes a lot of sense because to Kamali's point, you really want someone that can focus and go to the meetings and really stay in touch with all of the events that, that happen around this. And then eventually when, when a direction is, is created, there'll be a, a building committee really focused on this work, whatever that might entail. And then eventually, when, when a direction is, is created, there'll be a, a building committee really focused on this work, whatever that might entail.
Okay. The next line item is the operational budget committee. And there's already kind of a request for meeting times that. Currently, I am on it, Jen is on it, and Paul was on it. I think that it would be good to have at least a third person on this committee, for sure. Anybody want, put their hand up? All right, Kamali, thank you. So we'll make sure that that's noted, Greg?
Yes.
And obviously, these meetings are open and other people can join. So the payroll warrant, it looks like, I think I'm replacing Katura on that with an alternate being the entire committee. Is that, that's what we need? Any more to that, Greg?
No, that, that's it. And with DocuSign, it's, it's a much, much simpler task.
It is, all right. Policy sub, the policy development subcommittee, Katura and Jess are, are currently the members of that subcommittee. I, I actually have joined, not as a member. Do, are two people sufficient, Greg?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's the will of the committee to, to work. But if there's a third member who would like to join, that, that's always helpful as well.
What are some of the outcomes that have come out of the policy subcommittee that you can speak of or recall, Katura or Jessica?
Well, some very important things.
You'll see a couple tonight.
Yeah, I know. Really, everything, so we're, we, we're sort of methodically under Greg's leadership, going through the policies based on how long ago they were reviewed and then making any edits that are necessary so that they're up to date. Every now and then, there's a policy that really is outdated and doesn't need to be in existence anymore. So then we sort of discuss it in subcommittee and bring it to the committee, the full committee, to rescind. Everything that we discuss in the, in the policy subcommittee ends up coming back to the full committee. It's really just an initial review of the policies. And also any new policies that need to be in place. For example, last year, we worked on the new transportation policy that's now in place and was approved by the full committee. So that's really, that's really, in essence, I don't know if Jess wants to add anything, but.
No, I think that's a good summary. I think last year, the, we have, because of coronavirus, we haven't met as much. This year, we tend to meet once a quarter usually. And we, last year, we did some big ones. We did the bus transportation, we did the homework policy.
Yeah, sure.
So last year, there was a lot. And then obviously, we've been working on the COVID ones.
All right, so Greg, it sounds like we've got the, the four out of, that you need up there. Phil?
Perfect, thank you.
Roger, I'd like to put my hand up for the curriculum advisory committee. And if we're going to do a strategic planning committee as well. Those are, it's just the second to last in the, in the optional, as well as the, the third one down in the optional.
Got them both. And don't feel that because we don't have names on all these line items tonight that you won't potentially hear from me or, or, or I can hear from you, you know. On some of these, I will mention just a couple more. So the liaison to NSPAC is now Jess. She replaced me. I'm just presuming that the liaison to the selectmen, I will replace Katura. The Greg, what would you call the committee that will be, or the group, if you will, that would be kind of monitoring the, the rollout?
Of the strategic plan or the reopening?
I think it's the reopening. On the strategic plan, is, is that going to be more or less retired, okay?
This, the strategic planning committee will, will move into not an authoring, but more of an accountability, helping us monitor and, and do our annual check-ins. The reopening advisory committee panel is not listed here, but that is, that is another committee. I believe Katura was the representative. We haven't had a meeting over the summer, believe it or not, and it's hard to believe. But we will be revisiting and reconvening.
Okay, I just wanted to, that's one I wanted to bring up because I knew Katura was on that. I think we're going to leave the mentor to new members open. That was Paul Desmond. I think everybody's been mentored quite a bit in the last two or three months, both new members and, and not so new members.
At this point, it's just trial by fire.
I think that's probably all I made a note on. Oh, Greg, I know that, and I'm not sure whether this is a working group, inclusion, racism.
So, yeah, so we will need for the Coalition for Equity.
Coalition for Equity, right.
A representative, the school committee representative. And Roger, what I could do is have tomorrow Cheryl Lefry add the changes that were made this evening and also send this out as an editable document and have people put their interests. They want to join committees and, and then that can go back to you and we can finalize it.
Perfect. And I, I do believe that Jess, you were interested in being on that coalition from this, from Southborough?
I was, yeah, but I, you know, I think a lot of us are interested in it. I mean, I don't know that it has to just be one person.
No, it's not, it's not, it's not limited by any means, okay? But I know we wanted to have at least one name there, and we can put more names there. So as this thing, as this document goes out, feel free to add your name, absolutely.
Okay.
All right, so how should we vote this, however we're going to vote this? I guess, I guess I'd that, that this is not a binding vote, if you will, it's more of a
Yeah, I don't think it's necessary to vote, Roger, I just put that.
Yeah, that's fine, good. I can't, I can't even construct the, you know, the actual language for the vote. But, all right, I think we're through with this unless anyone would like to add anything. We can, we can move forward. So we have no old business. And we are now at the superintendent's report to the committee.
So the first item in your packet is the enrollments as of September 2nd. So Southborough's enrollment for Monday, September 2nd was 1,163. 16 fewer students than we had projected. Honestly, that is a higher number than we were anticipating. We were anticipating many families to choose private schools and then we older children who are home school. So we were, that is actually a real healthy number. The grade levels that we saw, the most significant decline were kindergarten, we had eight less students. Grade five, we had six less students, and grade six, we had five. And we did see several grade levels had a minor increase of enrollment, which helped offset the three grade levels with the most significant decline in enrollment. And the NSPAC projection for 2021 was 1,207. So again, that is a projection based on birth rates. So overall, I'm, I'm pleased with where our enrollments are, we continue to get enrollments, new students enrolling in our, our district. And the key enrollment date is October 1st. That is what gets reported to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. And that is what supports our, our Chapter 70 funding. So we are keeping a close eye on enrollments as we move forward. Next.
Katura has her hand up, I think.
Yeah, so I just have a, so we also received some additional information about the, the hybrid numbers versus the standalone numbers. And could you, could you just speak too, or maybe this goes to the principals? So, and, and the reason I'm bringing this up partly is also because when we get to the COVID policy later, one of the provisions in there is to allow a little bit of leeway in terms of class size from our typical class size policy. And in the standalone information, so for example, in grade one, 37 students, and they've been, there are two teachers, and so they're split into two classes of 19, I assume. For the rest of the grades two to five, the number of students is in the mid to upper 20s with 1.5, 1.5, 1.3, 1.3 teachers, which does technically bring the class size down to some, between 17 and 21. But I'm just wondering how that's going to work out practically speaking? Because my, my understanding from what I can see from this and, and what I can see unfolding is that there's sort of a co-teacher, there's one class of 20-something, and then a co-teacher who's split between a couple of different classes. And how is, how is that going to work? Like, when the classes are online, is it the entire class of 27 students? Is it, how does that, how's this going to, how does it play out practically speaking?
Sure, so I'll just, I'll just make a general comment. So after we did have our families enroll in the standalone remote program, we had a much better sense of, you know, what we needed in terms of faculty and staff to support the work. We worked closely with HR, Heather, and looked at faculty and staff who legitimately had underlying mental conditions that would not allow them to work in person. So we deployed those folks in the standalone remote program. And then we looked at class size. So for example, the, the grade one and grade, grade two and grade three, for example, you know, we had an enrollment of, you know, significant enrollment. So we had, we have 1.5 teachers working in, in grade two in the SARP program as well as grade three. And that will be a co-teaching model. So again, you know, looking at, you know, how do you group students that won't be whole class? For example, maybe there, there'd be two groups working on ELA instruction with one with a co-teacher and another with the, the other, the other teacher. So we're trying to be flexible in the way we're deploying the staff members. But essentially, it does reduce the class size to within our class size policy. I know that in grade four and five, Kathleen, that's probably a good example. You can speak to what that would look like in terms of, of how we're reducing the class numbers in those grade levels.
Absolutely, so we, yes, it is a co-teaching model based on content area. And we're also, again, it goes back to scheduling, examining what, what we have available to help support with most classrooms and designing what the instruction looks like on each given day, whether it's whole group or small group instruction. And really making sure that we're targeting the skills and, and levels that each student is, is bringing forward and reading those through, through how we're designing our instruction. So although it looks like a greater number of students, the teachers are really doing an excellent job working collaboratively with their grade level teammates that are, that are in the hybrid model, as well as their co-teacher within both grade four and grade four, and grade five.
And to piggyback on that, Ms. Valenti, is there room to change? So as the first couple of weeks go, and if the teachers and the co-teacher are realizing that, wait a minute, you know, getting everybody to submit their homework in the Google classroom and to check all those papers and email all these folks and, you know, get the children as well as the parents on board is causing some challenges for the 1.3 or 1.5 of them? You know, is there room to kind of adjust and say, let me pull in person X from over here so that they can now be a team of, you know, move up to two FTE instead of 1.5?
Right, I, I think that being very flexible as we move forward, right now, it's, it's a lot of theory and we need to get to the application part so that we can continue to meet and, and assess how we're doing and how we're best meeting the needs of our students. And then making adjustments according to, to the, to the data and the information that is, is being provided to us. So.
Okay, Kathleen, I can, so I can add to that, what these numbers don't represent are the special education educators, we're going to be working with students within the SARP programs as well, as well as ESPs and adjustment counselors. So there's a whole host of faculty and staff that support our classrooms that will also support our SARP classrooms. So this is just from a teacher perspective, but there's a lot of ancillary staff that's working with, with these programs as well.
Okay, I think that helps clarify it for me, Katura, because I didn't get that, just looking at the, the counts about the, that thought about having all of the other ancillary teachers assisting as well.
No, I do find, if, I have a follow-up question, if that's okay. No, that is, that is helpful to hear, I guess, I, the thing I was just thinking about though is that, is there one, there's a, there's one primary teacher for that whole group, is that right? And so then that teacher is responsible for, for example, you know, written progress reports and communication with the unit. Do you know what I mean? It just seems like a lot to put on one head, primary teacher.
So they will, so the plan and Kathleen and Steve and Clayton can speak to this. But the plan is that it is truly a co-teaching model where, you know, one teacher isn't going to be responsible for all the bureaucracy, the reporting and the paperwork. It's going to be, you know, a caseload kind of model where, you know, maybe that 1.5 has, you know, a set of students that he or she really gets to work closely with and will report out on, even though it's a shared experience and shared responsibility. And also, we're looking at content expertise. So when we get into the second and third, fourth and fifth grade level, looking at what content area expertise the teachers have. So for example, at Neri School, maybe that one co-teacher has more experience or, or a different background in literacy, might take a heavier responsibility in terms of literacy, where the other person might have a math management focus. So again, looking at how we deploy experts that we have teaching those, those classrooms and being strategic about it.
Okay, that's very helpful, thank you.
All right, so, and we'll keep you updated. I think as Kathleen, you know, we've never done this standalone remote program before. So we will be monitoring it very closely and getting feedback from parents and students and teachers. And Molly, there definitely will be adjustments along the way as we, as we learn what works well and, and what doesn't work well. And we'll, we'll be adaptive.
And Greg, can I just?
If I can just, oh. Sorry. I just had one more thing, just having met with our SARP teachers today. And I really have to commend all of the teams across Woodward, Finn, Neri, really working collaboratively, the grade level teams. It's not SARP and hybrid, it's really a nice blend of them working together, planning and pacing their lessons and sharing ideas and sharing, just sharing the way that they're going to deploy instruction and meet the needs of each, of each student. I think it's a real testament to how well our teachers work together and how it's the collective ownership of all students. And it's really been quite observable through, through what we're going through at this time. So it's not, it's really, it's really a team effort.
And I was just going to add, to build off of what Kathleen was saying, that when I think back, Katura, to your question about, a little bit more about what's happening in these PD days. And when I think about the workshop side that I mentioned, you know, you have people learning about, how do I use Google Slides in a way that makes it interactive for students? And that they are active participants in a remote learning experience. And then that's inter, or interspersed with conversation after conversation and collaboration, figuring out all these details that just couldn't be tackled. figuring out all these details, um, that just couldn't be tackled until, you know, it's, it's all so interconnected. So as the student support services start to figure out the scheduling for specific students, then something else becomes more clear, and then you get the right people together to say, okay, so what is this collaboration going to look like on the ground? And that's a lot of the work that is happening every day right now, is that just step by step, you know, unraveling and plan, or, not unraveling, but figuring out and planning of those pieces.
Okay. Thank you.
So we'll keep a close eye on, on enrollment. It's Jessica.
Hey, uh, I just realized that when we did our, when all the, um, directors did their updates, we didn't hear from student support services.
Yes, so, so, um, so Marie Allen is a grandmother. So, so her, so I'm not sure if she wanted me to announce that, but it's now public. Um, but anyway, I can, we can, we can give an update on student support services. So, um, the primary work that our student support services team, so Erica Mathew, Deb Lemieux, Marie Allen, and Kate Clark, and have been doing is really looking at the student support services and, and looking at the frequency of days our students will be attending, and also looking at what services and supports that will be needed in order to meet their, um, service delivery grids. Um, I think we are in a really good place in terms of, um, of having plans. And right now, our liaisons are reaching out to families and, and discussing what the plans are and making sure that, um, you know, students have what they need in terms of student support services at this point in time. Um, and I'm not sure if any of the principals want to add any of the details, some of the work behind the scenes that they've experienced as well.
I, I would just add, Greg, that the extended school year program, um, was a huge success. Um, I, I don't know if school committee members heard that kids came back and people were very anxious, parents were very anxious. A lot of the work that Mary Ellen did and other people did to set the stage around what parents could expect, what kids could expect, and, and staff was set. And, um, the kids came to our program and they were learning, they were having fun. I think it was a great success. It was a great model and catalyst for what we're going to be doing in the next, uh, couple of weeks. So I, I was thrilled to see kids back in the building, staff interacting with them, and, and kids getting supported in the ways that we typically do. So kudos to the student support service team. They did a, a great job with their extended, um, school year program.
You know, I'll echo Clayton's remarks, that the student support services department never stops. The, they end the school year and, and begin their summer programs. Um, and the summer was, uh, very challenging, but also very rewarding. They were the, kind of the, created the pathway for us to, to think about reopening, uh, this fall, did a really amazing job. So while, while they were thinking about reopening, they were also running programs and implementing a lot of these safety procedures and protocols and, and allowing us to learn some lessons along the way and, uh, allowing us to see how faculty and staff and parents and students reacted to returning. And, um, again, it was a great program, a great effort on their part. And again, thank you, Clayton, for, for, uh, sharing.
They were our soft opening.
Yes. So, um, Jessica, did that answer your question? Was, was that helpful?
Yeah, that was helpful. Thanks.
All right. So moving to FY '20 budget, um, so again, the finance team has done a tremendous job, uh, wrapping up FY '20 budget. Um, the appropriated budget was $20,820,874, and typically, we would hope to share a bottom line balance of zero. Um, but this year, as a result of the pandemic, um, and the great work of the finance team and Becky Pellegrino, uh, we have a bottom line balance of $99,592.43, uh, which was a result of the savings, um, due to the pandemic and the closer, closure from March 12th. And we thought it was prudent to return that money to the town, um, because again, it was money that was saved as a result of the pandemic. And Becky, I probably just shared everything you were going to share, but if I missed something, please add.
Yes, so I'm, I'm pleased to present the final FY '20 monthly general fund report to the school committee. Um, it would, some of the savings that we did see, you know, were some of the areas that we had discussed over the past few months, and those were in substitutes, transportation, as well as some of our utilities, the electricity and the heating. Um, and those savings were also able to help to offset some of the losses that we saw in our food service program as a, as a result of the lack of revenues. Um, I'd really like to thank outgoing town accountant Heidi Krieger and wish her well in her retirement, um, as well as the new town accountant Carla McAuliffe as we closed out FY '20. Um, we were able to work collaboratively on this, um, and I understand that, um, they closed out FY '20 last night at the selectmen's meeting. So for a very brief period of time, I am just working in one fiscal year, but I think that will quickly change.
All right.
Any questions, any questions on this? I would, uh, then entertain a motion to approve the Southborough Public School District final fiscal year 2020, end of year general expenditure, general fund expenditure report as of June 30th, 2020, until audited. Is there a so move?
No moves, just Jen.
Um, so moved by Jen.
I'll second.
I didn't see that. Who seconded?
Jess.
Okay, Jess. All right. So, so moved by Jen, seconded by Jess. Any further discussion? A roll call vote, please. Um, Katura?
Yes.
Uh, Jen?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
I vote yes, so it passes unanimously.
All right. Next in the superintendent's report is the capital, capital planning. Um, and again, usually this time of year, the capital plan, planning committee will, uh, meet to think about what capital items we would like to include in the upcoming fiscal year capital plan. Um, but this evening, I do want to, um, have Keith Lavoy and Becky Pellegrino give a, uh, brief update on the Finn Boiler Project. But I will, I will summarize it in, um, first before they begin. It's, it's on time and under budget at this point, so, um, we were concerned, um, in the spring about timing, and it was, as a result of the COVID-19, getting parts and components. And fortunately, those concerns have, have not come to fruition. So, um, again, Keith can give some more details and Becky about the financial position as well as the project.
Gladly, Greg. Would you be able to make me host so I can, uh, show the, uh, report? Can everyone see the screen? Very good. Okay. So I was able to provide an update to, uh, to Greg about the progress of the Finn Boiler Project. I would absolutely attest to what Greg just said. Uh, after the town meeting on June 13th, we, we were a little, we were concerned about whether the timeline would be met and that the boiler would be completed prior to the start of the heating season, which is typically in the middle of October. But I can say from the very beginning of this process up until, uh, even as late as today, we have been very impressed with the, the contractor, which is KMD. They were the one that were awarded the bid, uh, prior to the town meeting, and then we were able to successfully implement the contract thereafter. From that point on, Hill Associates was, um, our, our project manager, and they provided us with the daily updates on project, uh, process, uh, progress, which was outstanding. Um, Brian Fantoni, as far as one of our, one of our own that was watching over it, was there daily, reviewing things with the, uh, project manager as well with the contractors themselves. And overall, it's been a very smooth process. Principal Ryan got involved in, in a couple of moments. He has now spent more time in that boiler room than I ever thought he had prior, um, but we've certainly are, are impressed with where we are now. So, and up to stay, I provided a few photographs for people to see. Um, it doesn't do justice to the amount of work that was done. Uh, these are the new boilers, uh, that have been assembled. Uh, they do not have the, uh, the jackets completely around them, so you can see the exposure of the iron that is there. Um, but the, the amount of work that, that took to get these out of the room, uh, the original ones, uh, was pretty unbelievable. They used a pulley system that was pretty elaborate to get them out, uh, but that is the finished product. So these are the new boilers, the two boilers that have been installed, uh, high efficiency units that do have the ability to work with gas and oil. If natural gas were to become available, um, in that area, which it is presently not, we could make the conversion at that time. So it does have the dual fuel capability, which does give it some, uh, future, um, opportunities. The other things that were installed were circulation pumps and variable frequency drives. And I will say, this is where I feel we're really gaining the efficiency, especially with the variable drives. This allows the output of the motors to be regulated, and it's not just all on full the entire time. It's able to regulate itself due to the climate changes, uh, on different conditions of the system. So this is where this is all moderated from. This is a picture of the circulation pumps, and the VFDs are connected, connected to it. Another very interesting, uh, part of, of the project was a diagnostic tool that KMD was able to install, and here is a photograph of that. This is very interesting. What happens on a routine basis is that the brass, copper, and iron that is throughout the system is sampled, and this piece of, uh, equipment allows us to sample it and to make sure it's performing appropriately. And what it does is it really prevents any, um, premature corrosion that may occur throughout the system, which can be absolutely devastating. So anything that would be, uh, under a pipe or something that would be in a wall, this system is able to detect that, that corrosion and, and able to provide us with some reporting mechanism. So this is one of the, uh, cool new features of the Finn Boiler Project that we're, we're happy to share, and it, uh, was fully installed, uh, just recently, um, and is, and is operational. The last two components that have been installed is the hot water heater, uh, for the school as well as a reserve tank. So the image on the right is the hot water heater that was replaced, and the, uh, image on the left is of the glycol tank. The glycol reserve tank really is a, a, a nice feature that was added, which allows the glycol or antifreeze levels that are throughout the forced hot water system throughout, uh, Finn to be regulated. And it allows us to introduce fresh glycol at a good rate so that we, we maintain the system properly. So I've, I've learned a lot about glycol over the years from being at Trotter. We have had, uh, do our fair share of, of work with the glycol system that is part of Trotter, and now seeing, uh, you know, it fully installed at, at Finn, it has certainly been a treat, and we've got a lot of longevity coming from this, uh, system, uh, due to these improvements. So in conclusion, uh, really, overall, the project has gone tremendously well. I'm, I'm very impressed with KMD and Hill Associates, both our, our contractor and project manager. Uh, Brian echoes the same thing, uh, their professionalism, uh, has been outstanding, and we do expect that the project is going to be complete prior to students arriving. And then what will happen is the Massachusetts School Building Authority will come in and have to commission the project to make sure it was done to, to spec and perfected, which will probably happen in, in late September. So, you know, and then the heating season will be next, and we'll be ready to roll. So as Greg mentioned, we were worried about the timeline of this, uh, equipment availability, impact of COVID, uh, but I, I am very impressed with the, um, with the contractors and what they were able to do in a, in a very short amount of time. So, uh, kudos to them, and, uh, we will certainly provide you with hopefully a commission project, um, as part of our, uh, October meeting.
Keith, that was a great overview. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I remember when it came up at the town hall meeting. Um, is KMD or Hill going to be providing, um, the maintenance, like on a, every six months, or who, who?
We don't have to maintain it ever again. It's going to be perfectly operational. We'd never have to touch it. No. Um, we, we do go out to, uh, bid for that type of contract. I'm not, um, quite sure when that's going to be done. Uh, I don't believe KMD that does that type of maintenance work. They're more of an installer than someone that would maintain it. However, I, I know as part of the, um, a, a contract, we do have the ability to connect with the installer if we do have the need to do so.
Very good. Thank you.
Welcome.
Katura?
Uh, I just wanted to say, uh, congratulations on a great project, and, um, thank you for showing these pictures, actually. This is, um, really great to see all of this. I mean, this is years of work coming to fruition, and it's, um, it's wonderful to see. So, uh, great job. Looks, looks great, and I'm sure it'll, it'll be a great thing for the school.
It'd be one of those hidden things that you, you won't see, but you don't have to worry about. So that's the hope, um, going forward.
So I'll just, Katura, I did, do want to share that we did have to, um, disallow Clayton's request for a current machine added to the boiler system. So that was an add-on we did remove, so just to be clear.
Perfect.
Something generally, expenditure report.
So the next item on the agenda is the FY '21 monthly general fund expenditure report. Um, just have a couple of comments before I turn it over to Becky. And we are closely monitoring our budget as a result of our, some of our projections and expenditures due to COVID-19. Typically, we would, if we were in this, because we've now, I don't think we've been in this position since I've been here and spent some time where, um, we're considering freezing the budget in September before we even launch the school year, um, to make sure that we take an extremely conservative approach so that we stay within our appropriated budget. So principals have done a great job of holding off on, on certain expenditures that aren't , um, 100% necessary, and Becky's doing a great job just monitoring expenditures. And we're also looking for other funding sources. So, um, Becky's working closely with the town on accessing some of the care funding. Um, we're looking at migrants, um, whatever financial resources we can bring to bear to offset the, uh, potential deficit that we see, um, is been efforts of the, the financial department. Um, and at this point in time, I'll have Becky give a summary of where we are, um, with the FY '21 monthly, monthly general fund report.
Okay. So as you can see in your packets, as of August 31st, um, we had $1,452,175 remaining on the bottom line, or 6.84%. In comparison to last year, um, we were at 7.54% or $1.5 million. Um, there are some key areas, um, that we are monitoring, as Greg mentioned. Those are, um, our custodial supplies, um, our custodial contracted services, and then our building maintenance. Um, as previously mentioned, we are working with the town of Southborough, um, to claim some of the cleaning supplies and hand sanitizer and also the PPEs, um, as part of FEMA and the CARES Act money. You will also notice under the nurse line item, which is, um, 3,200, is that we've added a new line item that is specific to PPE so that we are able to track that more closely, and it will be easier for reimbursement. Um, so that's a, a new add for, for FY '21. You'll also notice that a few of our salary line items are showing as over budget. Um, as we've previously mentioned, our staffing is changing on a regular basis right now, um, and so we do anticipate that those line items will lay, level out over the next few weeks. But we are, uh, keeping a close eye on everything, um, making sure that, uh, purchases are essential. Um, and as Greg said, the, the administrators and the principals have been great to work with on that.
Questions on this, or shall we vote? We shall vote. I'll entertain a motion to approve the Southborough Public School District fiscal We shall vote. I'll entertain a motion to approve the Southborough Public School District's fiscal year 2021 Budget Monthly General Fund Expenditure Report as of August 31st, 2020 until audited.
I make a motion that we approve the expenditure report.
Second.
I missed the second.
And I'll second.
Okay, sorry. Okay, so moved by Kamali, seconded by Jen. Any further discussion? Roll call vote. Jen?
Yes.
Kamali?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
Katara?
Yes.
I vote yes. It's approved unanimously.
Right, next in your packet is the FY22 Budget Priorities. My recommendation to the committee is that we have a school committee working session to redraft our or the committee's budget priorities. Since we have a new strategic plan, Vision 2026, I think it's a good time to actually spend some time rethinking about the budget priorities and where the committee would like to go. That would be my recommendation for this evening. Just, again, I hate to say it, to schedule another meeting to talk about specifically just budget priorities and looking at the strategic plan, Vision 2026.
And I think this is important enough, you know, that it deserves more attention than I think we would be able to give it tonight. So, I mean, I certainly agree with that recommendation. I don't know how others feel.
I would support that. I think that makes sense.
I agree.
And anyone not in support? I don't think this requires a vote, but I think that's a good suggestion, Greg. So go ahead and schedule that, I guess.
I guess just a general comment is that these budget priorities are essential to our budget process at the central office and the district level. They really are guiding, you know, guide the work that we do and help us make decisions around where we expend funds. So I will work with Cheryl tomorrow to send out some calendar invites.
Understood. Thank you.
The next item in your packet is the FY22 Budget Calendar. So again, I believe tomorrow Becky and our finance team and I are actually launching the FY22 Budget Process. So we're doing some planning tomorrow. But again, it's hard to believe FY22 Budget Year is going to begin shortly. And we've added some key milestone dates to the budget calendar. But it's a dynamic document, and it will change as we get more information. And I do anticipate that this budget year will look probably a little differently than it has in the years past as a result of the pandemic.
We don't have any timeline for when we're going to get information about state or federal, right? I mean, are we going to be in this situation where we're having to make last minute check? Probably, right?
Yeah, I think that we'll be doing a lot of projecting and, you know, and I think we'll have to do a lot of adjustments as new information is available to us, more detailed information.
And the town meeting date has not yet been set. Is that right? I should look.
I'm, I'm not sure, Katara. I can check tomorrow and get back to the committee.
Yeah, okay. That's all right.
And that is the superintendent's report to the committee.
All right. Let's move on to educational policy, which I don't believe there is any at this time. And now we have the second readings.
So we have the second reading of the face covering policy, A170. The policy subcommittee met last week and made some suggested edits after the first read. And we also worked closely with Mary Ellen Duggan to update some of the procedures and protocols that are attached to this policy. So it's the will of the committee this evening that would like to vote.
Yeah, I think it just Greg, we lost Greg, so it made me host, but I wasn't trying to share anything. But Greg is back.
Yeah, I know that this, I know that there was definitely some time spent on this. It went back and forth, so there was a lot of work put in on this policy. Greg, are you trying to share your screen? Katara had a comment, but.
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry about that. All right, so, sorry, I lost my connection briefly, so I'm not sure if I missed any of the conversation.
No, we were just talking about you losing your connection.
I should have just let people know that I needed a break, but that was my sneaky way of taking a break, so.
We actually weren't done, and then you kind of broke in before we finished our conversation about you taking a break.
So I'm not sure if Katara or Jessica have any comments about, or Mary Ellen have any comments about the face coverings policy.
Well, Katara does. Do we want to put the policy up on the screen, or can we do that?
Just give me one second. All right, can people see that policy?
We can. Katara?
Okay, so, yes, so there was a lot of work put into this. I guess my initial comment is actually a question, which is, I know all of the committees are going to vote on this separately. Did Northborough, just out of curiosity, did Northborough vote on this last week?
They did approve this policy.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, so I don't really have any comments on the policy itself. I made all my comments in the subcommittee meeting, so it's, it looks good to me.
I will add that from the subcommittee meeting, we did update the guidelines on the mass policy to include some of the wording that was originally in the policy that really wasn't policy wording. So it was not, it's now included in the guidelines, which are linked in there.
Yeah, I was involved in some of the discussions, and I like the way this this came out, and it's good to know that it's the same policy that Northborough voted. I think it'd be confusing if we had, certainly not impossible, but confusing if we had different policies for the two groups. Other comments? Yep, all right. Well, I'd entertain a vote to accept the new face covering policy, A170.
I'll move to accept.
Moved by Jess?
Policy, yeah.
I'm sorry, moved by Jess, and?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Katara, moved by Jess, seconded by Katara. Any further discussion? Okay, roll call vote. Kamali?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
Katara?
Yes.
And I vote yes. It's unanimous. So now we've got the, you know, the new general interim policy on COVID-related issues.
So again, this was a recommendation by the Mass Association of School Committees to adopt an interim policy that basically allows some flexibility to work within some of the existing policies that might not be as pertinent at this point in time. And I think one that, as an example, one is class size, you know, again.
All right, you're back.
So one example of a policy that might need to be suspended or changed for a temporary point in time as a result of the pandemic. An example is class size. So it allows the committee and the superintendent to kind of work outside of some of these policies due to budgetary considerations. So it's attendance, time on learning, visitors in school buildings, and then illness and contact tracing are the key policies.
I was fine with the way it came out. Any comments, questions? And I guess I'll, is this another policy that is approved with this language at Northborough or not?
Yes, this is, this is going to be a policy that's approved, it was approved in Northborough, and it will be moved forward to the regional committee next week.
Okay. Questions?
Just something for discussion. So when I read this, I I read it under the mindset that it's just an interim policy. And so, you know, my approving of it is based on the notion that this will be revisited and we adjusted, you know, at such time that, and I didn't see any like notation like that, but that's the mindset that I understood and read this at, that it'll be revisited and modified either back to previous or, you know, an improved version of previous or from, or whatever we learned from this period in history at some later date. So if everyone else read it, Katara, Jessica, Jen, and Bajra with that same mindset, then I'm okay to approve it as is.
I read it with the same mindset.
Yeah, I'll just add that we did talk in the subcommittee meeting about putting some sort of sort of marker on when this might be rescinded or some sort of date. But ultimately, we just decided to leave that open under the circumstances since we really don't know how long this is going to go. And it really, each provision gives leeway on all of these things for certain purposes that really would just apply while the pandemic is happening. So we felt comfortable with it like this.
And there is no prohibition on, you know, on adjusting a policy or correcting a policy, so.
Right.
Other comments?
None.
Okay, so I'd entertain a motion to approve the new general interim policy on COVID-related issues.
So moved.
Moved by Kamali. Is there a second?
I'll second. Jen?
Seconded by Jen. Okay, moved by Kamali, seconded by Jen. Any further discussion? All right, we'll have a roll call vote. Jen?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
Kamali?
Yes.
Katara?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So that passes unanimously. Personnel items?
So next in your report is the Southborough School Committee Personnel Report. And I'll have Heather speak to this. But before she does, I'll just point out that this time of year, in a typical year, we see a lot of movement with our educator support professionals, and this year is no different. And when we talk about sorting out kind of what's happening on the hybrid days, part of the work that we're really doing is making sure we are hiring the cadre of ESPs needed to support that work. And this time of year, we're seeing a lot of ESPs getting educator jobs, which is what we want. But it does provide a bit of work from an HR and a building level in terms of hiring.
Thank you, and I will just echo that we do see a lot of turnover with the ESPs and aides this time of year. And we're probably seeing a few more this year, given the COVID situation. So to have this many, I think, is a little bit unusual.
It does seem unusual, but understandable.
Exactly. It's explainable. So under the leave of absence, we have two people on there. One person is, has taken a leave of absence to accept another position, and we've granted an unpaid, or a leave of absence from their regular assignment. And then the other person is taking a leave of absence, an unpaid leave of absence for the school year. And then, as you can see, we've had three retirements. Deanna Rollins, Sandra Scardotto, and Anne Thurber have retired. And then you'll see the resignations that I spoke of, or we both spoke of before. Lauren Castillo, Francesca Cavallo, Elizabeth Coyne, Sandra De Mayo, Joan Edson, Jennifer Glenn, Jennifer Guy, Deborah Kilroy, Mariana Lippi, Rachel Lipkin, Nicole Pentard, Stephanie Rooney, Carly Sartier, and Mary Kate. Then we do have some transfers, people who have accepted new positions within the district or within our three districts. So we do have some for transfers.
So just comments, so we have two of our retirees. It's not effective until the end of this academic year. So Sandy Scardotto and Anne Thurber will be, this will be their last year in their role. So we'll have much time to celebrate their contributions to our organization in the next months to come.
Anything else, Heather?
Are there any questions?
Well, thank you.
Actually, can I ask one quick question?
Sure.
I see we have somebody moving from a kindergarten aide to kindergarten teacher. Did we lose another teacher, or are we adding a teacher? Could you?
Oh, would you like me to speak to that, Heather?
If you would, please.
Sure. Well, Sue Hughes, who retired at the very beginning of this year, was not replaced. She could never be replaced in our district. But we did have a very comprehensive interviewing process and hired Jennifer Glenn, who was an ESP. So Jen Glenn is now added to the kindergarten team.
Right, thanks.
Other questions? All right, thank you. Again, I think we're moving to communications.
We have two communications. The back-to-school newsletter went out this Sunday evening. And then also in your packet is information about the MAS-C, MAS-S joint conference. Typically, it's an in-person conference, but this year, like everything else, it's shifting to a Zoom conference. And for new members, I'd highly recommend going to this conference. There's a lot of great information and great workshops and great sessions. I would actually say that's probably one of the better conferences throughout the year that I attend. And I think many of the committee members can attest, it's a really great conference to network and learn.
Anything else on that? Okay, we've got action on minutes, and we have two. We have the open meeting minutes on June 10th. I think we will take these separately. Anybody have any questions on the minutes? Then I'll entertain a motion to approve the open meeting minutes for June 10th, 2020.
So moved. This is Kamali.
So I'm moved by Kamali. Do I hear a second? Do I hear a seconds?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Katara, moved by Kamali, seconded by Katara. Any discussion? Roll call, vote. Kamali?
Yes.
Katara?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
And I vote yes. On the executive session minutes, are we moving to approve and release, or approve and retain? I don't see it.
Approve and release.
Okay, so, any questions on the executive minutes? All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve and release the executive session minutes of June 10th, 2020.
So moved, Jen.
Jen, motion by Jen, seconded by.
Kamali, second.
Kamali. Any further discussion? Roll call, vote. Kamali?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Katara?
Yes.
And I vote yes, unanimous. I guess we're now down to bills and payrolls.
There will be, the payroll and warrant will be sent through DocuSign either later this evening or early tomorrow morning, and it will go through the normal routing process where finance will sign off first, then Greg, and then it will go to school committee. So be on the lookout for that.
Shall I wait up for this?
No, I would not.
All right. Agenda items for next month. I note that we've got the school improvement plan presentation scheduled. Katara, do you know if there's going to be any, I guess, anything to discuss on the master plan by next month, you think?
Yes, I was just going to bring that up. So what I was hoping to do is, between now and then, I'm, I've been, I attended the master plan meeting a couple of weeks ago. Everybody was charged with sort of reworking their section or finalizing their section of the master plan. And so I'm working on a draft of the school, the school's portion, which I would like to share with the committee, hopefully, at our next meeting and get feedback so that the plan can move forward. So, yes, so I was hoping to put master plan update and review on the next agenda.
Okay. Anybody have anything they'd like to suggest now? I mean, there's going to be time.
I assume we'll get updates on how things are going in terms of reopening.
Absolutely. All right. Thank you, let's go to audience sharing. I did notice that there has been a hand up. I don't know if that was inadvertent or, and I'm probably not going to do well on pronouncing this name. It's, is it Arathi Maraliga? Am I close? And would you like to share? I can see that you're muted, but I'm not sure. All right, this has been, the hand has been up for quite some time, even closer to the beginning, so. Let's presume we lost contact. Anyone else for audience sharing? I don't see any other hands up. All right. If we don't have any other business to bring to the board, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. And before I do that, I'd like to just thank everyone. Not only in this meeting, but the people that have contributed to the meeting that weren't at the meeting, for all of the incredible efforts to bring us to this point. It's certainly, certainly, a lot of work is still to be done, but it's really, really been very impressive indeed. Any other comments? I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Moved by Katara?
Seconded by Kamali.
Seconded by Kamali. Roll call, vote. Jennifer?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Kamali?
Yes.
Katara?
Yes.
I vote yes. And thank you, everyone, stay safe.